Okay, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Garrett, would you take the role, please?
Councilmember McPherson.
Here.
Councilmember Biggs.
Here.
Councilmember Rocco.
Here.
Council President Bruce.
Here.
Mayor Steer.
Thank you, Lee. I'm here. Join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First item is a consent agenda.
Do you have anything in there? I move we approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
Motion made in the second. I don't approve. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Garrett, would you pull in council, please?
Councilmember McPherson.
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs.
Yes.
Councilmember Rocco.
Yes.
Council President Bruce.
Yes.
And that motion carries. Next, we have public comment. Is there anybody who wishes to address the council that didn't get a chance to sign in?
You, you want?
What? You wanted to say something? Well, that'll... Well, there'll be a public hearing on that.
That'll be later.
Yeah. All right. Let's see where I'm at here. Well, that takes us to CUNA Kindness Week proclamation. And before I read that, I just want to say how blessed we are to live in a community like this with all the weird stuff going on around the world. We can actually have a Kindness Week proclamation that means something, and I appreciate all of you for that. I think this is, this is a great place to live. I agree. With that, whereas the city of CUNA recognizes the value of simple acts of kindness that are performed without prompting or reason, and how these acts can have a positive impact in CUNA, and whereas the city of CUNA and Mayor Steer seek to cultivate a thoughtful, compassionate, and caring community by setting an example of understanding and acceptance for all through genuine acts of kindness, and whereas Mayor Steer's CUNA Kindness Challenge is one week where acts of kindness can be performed by any person in the city of CUNA regardless of age, origin, education, gender, beliefs, lifestyle, or abilities for the good of those around them, and whereas this week is intended to encourage all of us to practice acts of kindness in our homes, schools, businesses, and communities. Now, therefore, I, Joe Steer, Mayor of the city of CUNA Idaho, do here proclaim February 16th through 20th, 2026, as CUNA Kindness Week, and encourage all parents, students, community members, residents, and visitors of CUNA Idaho to show their, and practice kindness in the spirit of compassion and goodwill because kindness matters in CUNA and beyond. And thank you again for that. And we've got, we've got some buttons out there on the table, and there's also, we do the bingo cards so you can, you or your kids or whatever can check off the, the boxes in there every time you have an act of kindness, and it kind of gives direction on that. So, I appreciate everybody's participation in that. And that takes us to public hearings. First is case number 2509-S Indy subdivision, Marina Lundie.
Good evening, Mayor Steer and members of the council. For the record, Marina Lundie, Associate Planner, CUNA Development Services Department. The application before you this evening requests preliminary plat approval for a 23-lot, single-family residential subdivision with four common lots on 5.1 acres. The site is located near the intersection of West Ardell Road and South McClure Lane and is already zoned R6 medium residential density. The applicant has submitted an updated pre-plat and landscape plan based on the concerns voiced by citizens and the Planning and Zoning Commission at the initial public hearing. These changes were not conditioned as the initial pre-plat and landscape plan met CUNA City Code. The proposed updates were not seen by the commission. The changes include the alignment of Reliance Street and the adjustment of open space from the east to west side of the site. These changes resulted in a shifting of the surrounding lots, but there has been no change in the percentage of open space or in the residential density of the project. Staff has reviewed the proposed pre-plat for compliance with CUNA City Code, Idaho statutes, and the CUNA Comprehensive Plan, and should the council approve the application, staff recommends the applicant be subject to the proposed recommended conditions as outlined in the staff report. I'll be here for any questions that you have about the application, and the applicant is present tonight.
Okay. Questions for Marina? And the applicant would like to present, I assume?
Mayor, council members, my name's David Crawford, Centurion Engineers, 2323 South Vista Avenue in Boise. I'm here representing the applicant and owner tonight regarding an Indy subdivision. The proposal, the project was recommended approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission at the end of November last year, and they approved the design review for the landscape plan. The development will provide public streets, water, sewer, pressure irrigation, the extension of CUNA systems. The public works, public works folks have indicated they can provide sewer to us and the appropriate water and pressurized irrigation connections. We have adequate open space to meet CUNA's code. Connectivity is provided by completing the public streets that are stubbed to the property as originally envisioned with the Crimson Point subdivision. The completion of the street network will add additional access, not only for the residences, but for emergency services. We feel that is beneficial to the entire neighborhood. I've been in contact with the CUNA School District along with the owner about partnering with the district as we come to an agreement that will prove beneficial to them. For all intents and purposes, this project, it is infill development. It completes an already established development pattern. And to talk a little bit about the changes that were made, we did make those changes based on comments that were made by the Planning and Zoning Commission as well as by the neighbors. So what we did, if we can pull up a copy of the preliminary plat somehow? Let's see. I don't know if the new one's been included in the packet. There we go. Control, I should be able to wheel out a little bit. All right. So what we did from the original development is we took our open space, which was previously all along our east boundary line, which was over here, and we shifted the streets a little bit to better align with this property line and just created a little bit of a different intersection within ACHD's allowable tolerance standards for angle of deflection. We then put the open space over here on the west part of the development so, because we had some concerns about grades noticed by the neighbor. So we put that over there, hopefully better transition them and reduce the impact of any homes there. We feel that those change, we were also encouraged, again, to look for a possible connection out to Ardell Road. We did, we did look at, again, at doing a connection out to Ardell Road. However, Ardell Road is at least a collector's street, and it has minimum offset requirements for driveway intersections. There's an existing driveway all along here that goes back to a shop on our northeast boundary line. There's also an existing access right here about 150 feet east of our boundary that goes to the existing residence. So while we would have liked to have had that connection out to Ardell Road, we simply couldn't meet the conditions of the highway district to do that. So that's why we brought forward these modifications. We hoped it better fits within the neighborhood. We hear a lot about traffic these days, and we're doing our part that we can. We're kind of in a system of how money is apportioned and spent and where it goes. We only get to contribute at applicable times to help pay for street improvements. So, for example, we're doing all of our street improvements on this very 100-foot of frontage essentially. But where the real impact will come is when they build the homes, they'll collect impact fees, and those go into the Highway District Fund, and hopefully those fees are spent appropriately at the appropriate intersections. We really don't have much, we really don't have another mechanism other than that to do it. We all know that the school district is bursting at the seams, and we've been working with them to do what we can to help mitigate some of the challenges that the school district is facing. With the changes that we presented here, we believe we're bringing an attractive asset to the city of CUNA, and we've read the conditions of approval and agreed to them, and I'll stand for any questions you have.
All right. Questions for the applicant at this point?
So, the block schedule, is it still the same as you had on the original? I'm going back and forth between the maps.
The what schedule?
Your, the blocks, I guess the, the blocks that you're going to be, phases that you're going to be doing the project in?
We envision this to be a single phase of development, so yes, the blocks that we're utilizing have remained the same.
Okay. Yeah, I get block 1, 2, 3.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's whenever a street separation requires us to have a new block.
Okay. Thank you. Anything further?
Yeah, I do, Mr. Mayor.
We'll open the public hearing here in a minute.
And it's just a point of clarification. Somewhere, and I can't find it now, somewhere in here you referenced, and it's just a legal thing, but the city of CUNA Fire Department. The Fire Department is a separate rule entity, so that shot should probably be changed just for legality sake, I would think, because after last year's legal back and forth with a lot of things, it's just something I found. My next question would be, the letters from the irrigation company pertaining to runoff and delivery of water, has there been anything further happen with that?
I have spoke...
To me, these don't seem like that situation has been completely mitigated.
Councilmember McPherson, we're required by Idaho Code to maintain irrigation facilities to and through their historic drainage patterns. I have been in contact with Boise CUNA Irrigation District, and we've had several discussions over the past month about what that may look like. He's, he was out of town for the holidays, and we haven't connected since then, but we can, that's our, it's on us to make sure that we maintain that and to secure that approval from the Boise CUNA Irrigation District.
Okay. I'll go with that for a minute.
Okay. Further. Councilmember Rocco.
I have a hypothetical question for you. If this development was being built in Canyon County, when you talk about, you know, hopefully the impact fees would be applied towards the, finishing the infrastructure, what would be different if you were building this in Canyon County?
The major difference in Canyon County is different from Ada County.
I got you.
So Ada County Highway District is the only highway district in the nation that manages more than one city in its county. So, for example, Caldwell, they do their own streets. So as they annex, they annex the streets as well. So they apportion the funding, they do their own planning, they don't have another entity doing it for them.
Okay.
Okay. Anything further?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, going back to what Councilman McPherson said about the Boise CUNA Irrigation District, it says that you, you guys will reach back out to possibly work out a resolution. Did you guys have any conversation about what that would look like? Or is it still just kind of a, hey, there's a problem? And are you at the beginning of that fix, or are you at the end?
We're in the middle. We have a, we have a pretty good idea. The, with the holidays, it's really hard to get together with people to come to conclusions. I'm confident, based on my experience, that we can take care of whatever needs to be taken care of out here. It's not rocket science. This, there is quite a bit of grade across this site. So the upper property does have flood irrigation, and there's no defined channel for any, normally you'd find a drainage ditch on a property that picks it up and conveys it. In this particular instance, it was all farmland, so there's no specific irrigation drainage ditch that's on it. So we can propose several measures. It's just a matter of working with the neighboring property owner and the irrigation district to figure out what that looks like.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have any other questions at this time.
All right. Thank you. All right. This is a public hearing. We have signed up to testify Chuck Oskierko. I'm sure I did that wrong, but, yeah, if you would, just step to the podium there and make sure the lights on, the green light's on by pushing the base there. And then state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Chuck Oskierko, and my wife and I, we live at 2303 West Henna Street in CUNA, which is in the subdivision that is right being next, but the proposed 23 homes that are wanting to be built were in the Ruby Creek subdivision. So I wanted to throw out a few numbers to everyone here. And currently, in one phase or another, there's approximately 775 homes to be built or are being built. Now, this does not include the 23 homes that are being proposed this evening, and it does not include the 22 acres that are north of Ardell at Shala, where they're currently developing, because I couldn't find out how many homes are doing, to be proposed there. So with those numbers in mind, obviously, traffic, which is always addressed, is an impact because now they're saying, the developer here is saying that they're not going to be having an egress on Ardell. So it's going to go to the back, which is by the Ruby Creek subdivision and all the CBH homes that are currently, currently there. That's one of the problems is the traffic. Second is schools. Now, the gentleman didn't get to expound on what they have come up with for, to help mitigate the overcrowding at CUNA Elementary and CUNA High School, which are the two stated schools for this home development, which doesn't, which also has to take care of the 775 homes that I previously spoke about, which are all within a mile of this whole area that we're talking about. So that's another problem. And then, of course, just the traffic from the construction in and out. The 22 acres that I spoke about, they've been doing their, for lack of a better word, planting their explosives and having to do whatever they do to the ground to get it soft so they can build it. I don't know if that's going to be proposed for here, but that impacts the residents in the area. Also, we have the police and fire. That's a strain on them, even though that we have an outstanding police department and fire department, but they'll be taxed too depending on, you know, what, what happens in those areas. And then, water, which is a big consideration, which a lot of people think is an infinite source, when in fact it isn't. Water and sewer go together. Am I done? Okay. Okay.
You can wrap up. Go ahead.
Okay. So, in closing, I don't think that we need an additional 23 homes when we have all the building that is going on right now. And 23 homes is not going to make or break the budget or whatever resource or monies that the city of CUNA receives from those, from the building of those 23 homes. I think we'd be much better off with just leaving it as it is or finding maybe a farmer that would like to have the land to, to farm. Thank you for your time.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Steven Nelson. We'll give you an extra time just to get... Okay.
Green light is on. All right. Steven Nelson, 2082 North McClure Lane, CUNA Idaho. My concern is this connection from the subdivision out to our private lane. It's, you know, they haven't come and talked to us about it. The McClure Lane is a private, is private property. It's a separate lot out of our subdivision. So, we don't agree with putting more traffic out there. Every, every house on that street has livestock and dogs and cats and all the other creatures that run around out there. And then, the, going, going back to his question about drainage, there's an excess water ditch that runs right through there. It's buried when it goes across there, but it's, it's right there. So the, if you look at the houses, that last house in Crimson Point is crooked on the lot because they forgot about the drainage pipe. They had to turn the foundation to get past it. But it's just, I tend to agree that there's, there's plenty of traffic out there already. Something needs to be done on Ardell. You know, they're getting ready to tear up Deer Flat and 10 Mile for a roundabout. That means all the traffic out of Crimson Point has got one escape route. So, you know, it's just, I, I don't support the subdivision at all, so, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Shannon Jensen.
Hello. I'm Shannon Jensen. I live on 2290 North McClure, private lane. So the changes are a big surprise for us. We before had two houses in front of us, and if you go back to the plot, I could show you, that road goes right into arena. Our house has been there since the early 1990s. And we're going from an open space in front of our house now to six houses on our road. So I know you guys have approved before and made mandatory single-level houses on McClure that butt up to there. Cory Barton had to do it. We would love to see that as well, especially now since we had no idea we were going to have houses in front of us. I called ACHD. I was like, hey, why do we have this road stubbed into our road now? Like, you can't have access. He said, well, maybe in 100 years, you guys will sell, and there's access. Well, how, does not anyone know, like, all four of us would have to sell at the same time to make that happen, right? So we already have problems with trespassers. We have signs, we have no construction signs, we have all sorts of things. If you put a road into our road, oh, that's a problem. I called ACHD. They said, we're going to put up those red and white signs that say it's, it's, it's an end. Yeah, those are all ran over at the other streets. So those don't work. So I said, hey, can you have them put a solid fence up for us along there, along McClure? Said, that's not our business, that's for the subdivision. We would love to make that mandatory. If we have to put up a street on there, it's not going to be pretty, or a fence to keep people out. It won't look nice, and it might be offensive. So I would encourage the developer to put up a nice solid fence along McClure. Yeah. Razor wire. So everybody that knows what trespassing is doesn't know it, can't read, I guess, all the other people. So I know the road, ACHD's okay with it, but please do a good job of leaving us with, starting off right with good neighbors. And that is that solid fence. So that would be great. We're already blasting out on Ardell. It spooks our livestock every day when they do it. They've done property damage to people near there. If they're, I want to know if they're blasting. We don't know that. We were told, yes, they have to blast, they haven't. Are they going to do any kind of warning to us? Let us know we have a basement? Are they going to come inspect our basement and see how bad they cracked that basement up? I know that happens. So this would be a huge hardship for us if people have easy access to McClure. And believe me, they would love to drive through there. They'll drive right through those end stubs. The single level is important. And then, the one thing I wanted to say is like, the irrigation, there is irrigation that goes underneath McClure. We have to address that. We would love to still have our water. And that's, I guess my time's up.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Adam Criss.
Good evening, Council Mayor Adam Criss at 2233 West Henna Street. I've lived in this area for that house for over 13 years. Some of my concerns, this street, is, again, we talked about traffic. We have a lot of children. I have four children myself who go to the school, and it seems like every year their classrooms are getting fuller and fuller, and we have zero answers how to fix that. I know that everybody on this board has ran, and I have voted for most of you, and I would suggest that since you are here, that most of people here have voted for you. On the smart decisions of development, I hold you to that. As a voter, as a constituent, I hold you to that. We need to make good decisions. We can't just keep rubber-stamping neighborhoods. I have a picture. I don't know if I can add it to the, the record. We just had a neighbor who had a low-sized bread of rock that came through their roof because of blasting. It could have killed somebody. It was completely negligent, and that was just from the neighborhood to the north of us. Complained to the city, had nothing that came back. I have children, again, I, our neighborhood is full of children. Crimson Point Elementary is packed full. They have any kind of event, Shala is, is, maybe I should talk to my buddies back here, but Shala is, people are illegally parking to even get into that event. There's not enough parking, and it's, and it's packed full of people. And our kids are, are most priority. 23 homes adds roughly 100 cars a day down Henna, which is going to be essentially the route. I beg, I beg you to consider the people who live in this area, not necessarily a developer who, who works off of Vista. We have a lot of neighbors in our small little neighborhood that have come together and say, please do not do this. They may have checked the boxes, but is this smart development for CUNA? I do not believe it is. It stresses our fire, it stresses our police officers. As a police officer myself, I know that you, as you stack more houses into a smaller neighborhood, you get more problems. One of our biggest calls for service is off Matter Lake in, in CUNA. It's, it's huge. And why? Because we stack a lot of people into a small amount of space. That's what we're doing inside here. The, these houses do not match our houses that are just down the street. They're about half the price and almost a quarter the size of what we have. So I challenge you to rethink it. Even our board, even the development, did not like this plan, but they pushed it forward because it checks the boxes. It's okay to say no. I challenge you to say no. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for him.
Yes. Take your question, please. Councilmember Bruce.
When you, when you mentioned the board, what, what board approved it? What board did, are you speaking of?
Planning and zoning board.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Excuse me, I should have stated that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tim Jensen.
Tim Jensen with CUNA School District, 711 East Porter Street. I just want to come tonight and verify what the developer was stating about partnering with the district. And as we've had a lot of these conversations, you guys well know that's part of the process for CUNA School District, is speaking with developers about the mitigation to help offset and mitigate some of the costs of, the additional costs of either transportation or facilities. And, you know, before we go down the rabbit hole, yeah, this subdivision doesn't provide mitigation. It's going to build a new elementary school. It's not going to build a new high school or finish Swan Falls, anything like that. But all these developments that go in that have been approved, there's, you know, there's other impacts besides facilities or, you know, new buildings that go into the school district. And so these guys have been gracious enough to, to work with us on helping to offset some of those additional, like I said, operations or personnel costs that, that go with new subdivisions going in. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Rocco.
Tim, may I ask, what does that partnership agreement look like?
We're actually still in the process of finalizing the MOU, and what they've... We're actually still in the process of finalizing the MOU, and what they've talked about is, um, helping us with some of our facility needs, um, at some of the buildings. We've actually given them the capital list and I've met with them two different times. And, um, they, we're in the process of picking out what that project is, because they wanna do, the one, the initial, um, conversation with them, because this is going into the Crimson Point, um, school boundary, they wanna do something specific for Crimson Point, and so we have that capital list and, and as of right now, we haven't finalized what that is, but it is something that's gonna be focused to the neighborhood that they serve, or, you know, one of the neighborhood schools that they service.
I mean, as you work through the process, do you have like a dollar figure in your mind?
So, the dollar figure, the, we had a study done in twenty-twenty-two, and the dollar figure comes out to three thousand two-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars per door is what that cost is, um, to the district to serve the students that come in. And so, yes, to enter, that's our figure that we work with them on. And, you know, if they choose to do a capital project, we, you know, we choose a capital project that is similar to what that dollar amount is and...
Right, so it'd be like three thousand something times twenty-three?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Jensen. Uh, out of all these developments, and I think this is the problem we always go back and forth with, right? Is that, yes, we do partner, but, but yet we still haven't actually built out any capacity for the schools. Now, we've had other schools come in and they're building some capacity, and we go back and forth about, does that really help or not? But, uh, out of all these projects that you guys have partnered with, have you started to see the results of those fo- those, those agreements that you've made? Had they started, some of these developments started to take care of that? Uh, I don't wanna say necessarily a, a, a payment, but whatever you guys have decided, uh, on, are they already starting to buy buses or, or buy mobile units or whatever, whatever agreements you made with other, other developments? I'm just trying to see that, you know, a small one like this will probably get started faster, some of the other ones may take more time. But, but as we continue to work through here, right, because some of it is a legal thing, some of it's not, is the school actually benefiting from those agreements as of now, or are we still waiting for those to come to fruition?
So, you kind of helped me answer my question a little bit, you know, some of it's timing. Um, with the developers, when we do the MOUs with them, um, we set up a, a plan for those, whatever that mitigation may be, what, you know, if it's buying a school bus or, we're currently working with the developer on adding spaces to Kuna High School's parking lot. And so, the, the agreements that we come to them is, is by the time that last certificate of occupancy is given for that development, is when, I'm gonna say, payment in full is due, or, you know, say, if they're purchasing a product like a bus, then it's due at that point in time. And so, we, we put that out there because, you know, we, we also understand and realize that developers are depending on the, that income that comes in from, say, selling the lots to pay those things. Right now, we have currently just over half a million dollars of MOUs out with, you know, either in, in donations, the thirty-two-eighty-six per door donation, um, or the capital projects to be done. And those are all for existing projects that are in the process or of being built or have already been approved to be built. And so, I, I don't, I'm not trying to dance around your question, I'm just trying to explain, it, it is kind of a lengthy process, and, you know, it goes through the attorneys on both sides to make sure it's right, you know, for both sides. Um, but then, yeah, the final is when, you know, that last certificate is, is issued, is their timestamp. If they haven't completed payment or project by then, it has to be completed by then, and so...
A follow-up.
Yes, Councilmember Bruce.
I think, you know, what, what kinda concerns me is that, um, you know, we have so much development going on, at some point, we're gonna be teaching kids on buses, right? I would rather, maybe whoever decides what projects you do, say, we can't service it at this time. You know, it helps us up here to make the decisions rather than, uh, you know, kinda push it further down, but I appreciate your time, thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you for the question.
Anything further for Mr. Jensen?
May I have a question?
Yes, Councilmember Rocco.
Maybe it's more of a process question?
Yeah.
So as I was looking through the packet, I don't see a letter from you whether you're gonna partner or not partner, am I missing it?
It's not in there.
And then, but what's the process?
There, there is no letter in the packet.
When I've looked at packets in the past, I'll see a letter saying, "School District Partners," uh, on this particular development. So, I guess I'm trying to understand the process.
I, I need to check into that, Councilmember, uh, the Ra- uh, Mr. Rocco, I almost said La Rocco, so sorry. Um, that is, because we had submitted a letter, and so I need to go back and check on that, because this is something from the get-go that they had supported us with, and so, you just caught me by surprise, I don't know...
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm trying to understand the process myself.
Yeah.
And that might be a Doug question as well to kinda help.
Okay.
Just...
Okay. Got it.
Yeah, and I, I will check into that to make sure there is one on file, because there, I know there was a letter that was done, and so, I appreciate you honestly bringing that to my attention.
All right, very good, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen.
Thank you.
Uh, Dorian? I ruined your name, didn't I, I'm sorry.
Apologize in advance, I just had surgery, so I'm kinda breathy. But, my name is Dorian Romero Pleon, and I live at two-one-three-eight North Mawth Avenue, which is the one that they refer to, the very last one that is offset, because there is indeed a drainage ditch and a drain in my yard. You, Mayor, you started out this meeting in a wonderful way, about kindness, and I commend you for that. And I would also like to add respect, because I understand, saddened, but understand that Kuna is developing, but there are many, many homes already existing in the Crimson Point Development, and others existing in the Ruby Creek Development. And this project doesn't account for us and doesn't actually take in any of our concerns. The primary concern that we raised multiple times was the access from Ardell. And I heard and understood what the fellows said about the driveways, but basically, four properties are going to radically, in favor of four properties, radically impact the Crimson Point homes and the Ruby Creek homes because of the traffic flow, when Ardell is a very big road. Why, what exceptions exist to protect us and kind to us that already exist there? That neighborhood in the afternoons is flooded with children, little kids playing in the street like a neighborhood should. They're gonna get mowed down with this extra hundred house, cars going through. Additionally, at the city council meeting, planning zone, the fellows already referred to, one of the council members said, perhaps tongue-in-cheek, I do concern about the access from emergency vehicles, how are they gonna get through? And he said, well, maybe we, they could break down a fence and exit that way if they really needed to. But, that's ridiculous, what exploration has there been to explore the possibility for an exception and a development to go on to Ardell or access by Ten Mile, which is, you know, big and wide and aside for true traffic, not North Mawth and Crenshaw, which is windy, it's ridiculous. On top of that, on top of that, of course, school crowding, which has been mentioned. Another thing, at the city planner meeting, they mentioned, oh, and, uh, everybody says I'm never gonna sell, but you know, the way the wind is going, it's gonna sell, it's an ad lib. But, the point is, they said, yes, those houses on the McClure Lane, private lane, that she talked about, those three big sort of farm properties, they are not gonna stay that way. But, on Ardell, a huge eighteen-thirty Malacra, that massive complex is one house on a huge plot, and next to it, also relatively new, huge house, so it could stay private. And I have more, but I think those are the highlights, and sorry, I cannot breathe very well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time.
Uh, and you wanted to sign in, is that correct?
Sure.
Okay. If you wanna, come on up. And then, is there anybody else who didn't get a chance to sign in who would like to testify?
Sorry, I had one last quick point, and that is...
You'll suspend, ma'am.
I don't know what that means.
Yeah, you need to go sit down.
The sign of the law is even falling down, wasn't even up, how is that respectful?
Ma'am, you need to suspend.
Okay, uh, you, you may go ahead and take the podium, sir.
Excuse me, sorry to be late about signing up there.
That's fine.
I read the yellow sheet that was sent to me, and I didn't see that I had to. Anyway, uh, my, my name's, uh, David Bastone, my wife Tamara and I, uh, live at twenty-two-eighty-five West Beige Court, which is in the Ruby Creek subdivision area. We've lived there for five and a half years. We love this area here. Uh, one, there's about three things or so that I'm concerned about. I envision that this area is going to develop into residential at some point anyway. However, there's a few things I'm concerned about. One is, that was already brought up, is the size of the, these, uh, lots and the, the housing units that's gonna be built there. Our Ruby Creek subdivision area, most of the houses there are worth about five-hundred-and-fifty to six-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars, and they're on bigger lots than what this is being proposed, nearly double. And, uh, our subdivision had restrictive covenants, that, that the houses had to be a minimum of eighteen-hundred square feet. And so that's what's there, is above eighteen-hundred, three thousand to eighteen-hundred square feet is what most of the houses are there. Uh, one of the things that I'm concerned about related to that is because of the smaller lots and, uh, smaller properties, that it's gonna affect the valuation of our properties significantly. So that's one concern that I have. I'm concerned about the traffic, which has been mentioned about coming off of Ardell Road, I believe that road needs to go in there. I'm actually an engineer in trade, and I know for a fact that, uh, you can have more than just a couple of little, uh, places that go onto a street like that. Private lanes and drives are excluded from what was mentioned by the contractor. And McClure is a private drive, and everything else that goes onto that street are all private drives. So I, I think that, uh, there's no reason why that road can't be built there, uh, that would come off of, uh, Ardell. I think that would make it better access for any emergency vehicle, vehicles, and it would definitely make it less, uh, traffic coming in and out of, uh, out of that area. I'm also concerned about the water drainage a little bit. We've had people in our area, to the south side of our area, that have had problems with, uh, water drainage, and I think that needs to totally be addressed, that's not been fully addressed, I don't think, at this point. So anyway, there's a couple of those things, I, if I've looked at the size of the lots, they're very small, and, uh, probably fifteen to sixteen of these lots need to be condensed down into about ten, so that they're bigger. Anyway, those few things that I mentioned is what I'm really concerned about the most. Thank you.
Okay, uh, so when you're talking about water drainage, are you talking about irrigation stuff, or are you talking about when it rains and...
It seems like it's, uh, just typically throughout the year, that, that the drainage doesn't seem to drain off well on the properties, especially to the south. I know that a lot of them have, uh, drainage, special drainage situations set up, set up there so it can drain off of their property and such.
Okay.
And so I, I think it needs to be looked at and addressed, that, uh, it's all set up for these higher properties to drain appropriately.
Okay, thank you. All right, and, uh, that's all I had to sign up to testify, is there anybody else who wishes to? Okay. If you would, just sign in on this handy fee. Thank you, and you may go ahead and take the podium.
I'm Patricia Christ, I live at two-two-three-three West Henna Street in Ruby Creek. I just thought I would speak real quick, um, related to the drainage issues. Um, when we went to the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting, we presented them with a packet of information we collected from, there's forty-four homes, I believe, in Ruby Creek, and probably twenty to twenty-five of those homes all have sump pumps, um, drainage issues, French drains, all sorts of things, without anything happening over in that new development. If it rains, we have standing water still with some of these problems, so that package should be included in that. I just echo all the other statements that have been said, and in the planning and zoning, I just remember the comment that they said, well, it could be worse, and I just think, again, we shouldn't be rubber stamping all of these things without making the appropriate modifications that would benefit our communities.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that's all I had, anybody else wish to testify? Okay, uh...
Mayor, Councilmembers, David Crawford, again, two-three-two-three South Vista Avenue in Boise. Um, definitely hear, uh, the neighbors and their concerns. We're really limited on how we can address those concerns when it comes to schools, funding, when it comes to police and fire and parks, we do pay impact fees. When, and that's how the system has chosen to offset the development costs is through impact fees. And so, those are paid at building permit application. We build all the public streets, the infrastructure, the drainage, in accordance with the Highway District, uh, Highway District standards, which are pretty thorough. We're required to do lot grading and drainage plans in the city of Kuna, those are reviewed by this Public Works Department and approved by the, the acting city engineer. So, these are well thought out. We're in the, what we call the entitlement phase of things, where we check all the boxes, because we're required to check all the boxes. We have to provide lots that meet certain parameters by code, uh, and so we provided a fully compliant subdivision that's in an infill development that we think will be an attractive asset to the city of Kuna when it's complete. It does represent change. We are required to, there's a lot of people talking about drainage here, yes. There, those drainage issues from lot drainage to street drainage will all be taken care of through the, uh, construction plan review process and constructed to Kuna and Highway District standards. Uh, to address the private lane, we understand that it is a private lane, and we made a pledge to keep people off of that the best we can. And yes, at the end of the development, we are required by the city of Kuna to put up a side obscure, a side obscuring fence along the entire perimeter of the project, and we can fence along that east boundary and place the required, uh, this road will be extended in the future Chevron signs. So that should hopefully address that. I can't make a commitment that we would only do single level homes, because I haven't had, discussed that with the developer, but we would ask that we would be recognized to have the same rights that anybody else that buys a lot has. I understand, school's been talked about, uh, by a number of... I understand school's been talked about by a number of the folks here. I know that's a real challenge here in Kuna, I wish we could do more about it, but we're doing what we can through mitigation and the understanding with the city of Kuna. There was blasting concerns brought up by a couple of folks. We don't know if we're going to need to blast anything. More and more, we're going towards rock sign, all of our utility trenches and storm drain trenches. In this particular instance, both in our neighborhood meeting, and now, we've made a commitment to notify people prior to our blasting if it's chosen to do so. I know that we work with a blasting company routinely that blasts adjacent to micron facilities. It, I haven't heard of rocks flying through people's homes in about thirty years. Blasting has come a long way, and I'm sure it's occurred. Because blasting's come a long way, we utilize it all the time.
We have videos.
So, yeah, I have videos of it. So, so it's not our objective to do anything substandard or subpar, or pull the wool over anybody's eyes. We've brought this project forward in accordance with Kuna City codes, and we're required to do that. We're, we're not trying to pull a fast one here. This is Kuna, it's in need of housing, and this small infill development, yes, it's a change in the neighborhood. But in comparison to, like Sabino's Rocky Ridge, it's really quite small. However, it does impact on the traffic patterns, and part of that is because of the history. Back in the old days, you know, we did things differently, there was a different set of codes. For example, you wouldn't have a road as long as Hannah without an emergency access out to Ardell. You'd have them probably every, you know, seven, eight hundred feet. This one is quite long. But this finishes the development pattern that was originally established. There's not a lot we can do. The lot was annexed into the city, and we only have a hundred feet of frontage up on Ardell. And we can't meet the offset requirements, which is why when we talked with Ada County Highway District, they just said, "No." So I can't even propose that out there. We would have loved to have a public road connection out there. I wouldn't have had to build that silly cul-de-sac in the middle of the subdivision. So those take up a lot of room. We tried our best to respect the neighborhood by bringing something that is in conformance with code, the single-family homes, that's in keeping with the neighbors. And with that, I'll stand for any questions you have.
Okay, questions for the applicant? Well, so I guess I'm still a little confused on the, the access to Ardell. I know you said they don't have the offset in that. How, how close is it to having the proper amount that's needed?
It's not close at all.
Not even close?
Not even close. So we've got about three hundred feet to here, and then I've got another hundred feet here, right? But there's an access point to the existing home at a hundred and fifty feet and a driveway access right here.
So it's distance between is the issue?
Correct. So this home can have those two access points because it historically had them. And McClure can be here because, you know, that's where it was built, and I could get really close if there wasn't two access points already there.
Okay, thank you, that answered my question.
I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then did you want to ask Doug about-
Yeah, Doug, would you mind the process?
For the record, Doug Hanson, Planning and Zoning Director, can you refresh me on what process you're asking about?
Right, usually I see in packets when the, what the school is either going to partner or not partner with the development, and in this particular incident, I didn't see it in the packet.
We, we don't have, as far as the, the link to the application materials that I have seen and gone back to, we don't have a letter from the school district on this particular application.
Okay.
That I've been able to locate.
Thank you, sorry. Marina Lundey, Kuna Development Services Department. If I could clarify, this is actually an error on my part, and I'll apologize to the council for that. I did receive a letter from the Kuna School District, and I just found that in my email and have added it to the agency comment folder. It does essentially state what Tim said tonight, that they're actively partnering, and so that is an error on my part, and I apologize.
Yeah, no worries, thank you.
Thank you. Lost in the shuffle.
I have a question for Doug.
Yes.
The, the neighborhood that they're talking about, Ruby Creek, what was the original zoning for that area?
For the record, Doug Hanson, Planning and Zoning Director, I can look into that for you, Marina might know that.
I think they're both R six.
Was it all six surrounding it as well, Marina?
Seven, generally, that's what.
Yes, I believe.
They're both R six.
The surrounding zones, or, sorry, would you mind repeating the question?
I was just curious, the, the Ruby Creek subdivision that's right there to, around it, that was all R six originally as to, when it was built, right?
Is that, yes, that is R six to the west.
I have a question for Public Works.
Councilmember Rocco.
Adam, have there been any downstream capacity considerations we should be aware of with this development, such as lift stations, trunk lines, or future utility upgrades to this area?
Good evening, Mr. Rocco, Councilman Rocco, excuse me. Adam Wenger, Public Works. Six-nine-five-zero, South Ten Mile Road. This goes wood sewerage to the west and the south, which goes to the Crimson Point Limp Station, which has capacity. And we have capacity in all lines from there to the treatment facilities.
Okay.
This does not have a meaningful impact on that capacity.
Got it, thank you.
I have a question for Mark.
Yes.
Hey, Mark, so-
Councilmember Biggs.
So this isn't an annexation, this isn't a rezone. Where, what options are we looking at as far as from the city council on this one?
Mark Bybee, city attorney. That's a fairly broad question, Councilman Biggs. And I think I will offer the clarity that I, when you're dealing with a plat as opposed to a rezone or an annexation, like you cited, your discretion is more limited as a council. Because at the plating phase, it's about whether or not the plat has drawn, been drawn consistent with the standards required by city code and state code. And when drawn consistent with those sta- standards, the applicant is going to be able to obtain approval. The city's not able to, on an application-by-application basis, change its standards to deny something or ignore its standards. If they comply with the standards, the city council should be approving those applications.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bruce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Adam, have you, did you, the drainage information that they were talking about, did you have a chance to review all of that for the area? I believe they brought up drainage issues around that neighborhood, or?
Council President Bruce, the drainage issues that I'm most privy to in the discussions were primarily stormwater, which the city of Public Works does not manage. So the engineering on the developer's side and the city engineer would review those, but not something that we particularly pay attention to.
Who would that fall on?
Stormwater, ACHD, developers engineer. If it's irrigation-related, then-
Boise, Kuna?
Yeah.
Okay.
But since we don't control the roads, we don't control the stormwater.
I have a question for Councilman McPherson.
Councilmember Rocco.
I'd like to, I'd like to relive what your first question was, and I don't think you received-
Do you, you have a question, or do you want to deliberate it?
Okay, I'll wait for deliberation.
You guys have anything else? Any other questions?
I don't think so.
I move, we close evidence presentation and move to deliberation.
Second.
Motion's amended seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Sorry.
Fire away.
You seem to not necessarily be satisfied with the answers. I just wanted to go back to that question that you were asking, and that's it. It was about, I think it was about the drainage or the irrigation.
Yeah, we already had, I mean, it's already been stated, there's flooding in the neighborhood from rainwater and stuff. There's no clear path of if the existing home were to utilize their flood irrigation, where's that water go?
Right.
I know in the past, in other parts of the city, that's been an issue where, you know, they didn't end up putting a drainage system in or whatever, and it ends up in a homeowner's backyard.
Right.
And now the city's in the middle of it, and it shouldn't be.
Right.
It's, you know, it's not our problem. But also, the city engineer just stated that, you know, the irrigation runoff and stuff, actually after the water leaves the canal and goes over the weir blade where they measure the water to the homeowner.
Right.
That water is then not their responsibility to manage the runoff of. They delivered it to property, it's a property owner's responsibility for the runoff of that afterwards.
Got it.
So if said homeowner on Ardell Road does irrigate, then it goes into these people's backyard. Adam's phone's going to blow up, Doug's phone's going to blow up, probably the chief of police's phone's going to blow up. Then they're going to get the mayor's hotline, and, you know, where's that putting us? Until, I, I mean, for me right now, it's a no, because I, where's that water going to go? Put a pipe in and run it down to the odd-shaped lot where there's a drainage thing, is that the proper place for it to go?
Correct.
Because right now, as stated, that lot has a lot of slope to it, and I'm very familiar with that lot.
Correct.
So anything that comes from above it is going to go down there-
Totally.
And just cause more problem on, I forget the street name, Hena or something like that. But it sounds like there's already an issue there, and this, to me, is just going to add to it, potentially.
Sure.
Maybe I'm wrong, but it seems like we stated we checked the boxes, but that box isn't checked, in my opinion.
Right.
Well, and I, I think the same thing by still not having the connection made with Boise, Kuna irrigation. That plan's still not, they haven't come to grips with what is really needed, so.
Right.
They're still negotiating with Mr. Salmberg, I think it is.
Yeah, I saw that. It took like in, I think it was in Ruby Creek, she stated that twenty-five of the forty-four have sump pumps and other mitigation, so, okay, thank you.
So I have the same, same concern. And to add, it checks the boxes, I really don't like the McClure dead end, essentially, where they have to drive back out through Ruby Creek. But that's not anything for me to, to expound upon because it meets illegal definitions.
Well, I think right, if I may, what, what we've run into, what we've talked about, is that a lot of these decisions where we say, hey, we're going to handle it, we're going to handle it, if it's not already in the agreement, then down the line, they go back to, well, it's not in the agreement. So any of those things that we want to address, or even the agreement with the school district to be fleshed out, I'd like to see those done before we move forward, just because the last property that came up when you called me.
Exactly.
You know, we want to make sure that it says that in the agreement, so that we can hold them to it. That's my thought, so. So, I mean, we could table it, let them figure that out.
Send it back to Planning and Zoning?
I mean, what's your thought, Mr. Mayor?
Well, I don't know, we need to send it back to Planning and Zoning. I think, I think if the major issue is the drainage and that, then I think the best idea would be to table it so that we don't have to go through the whole advertising process again, or-
I think, yeah, because legally he does meet the requirements, right? We've been through annexations, rezones, things like that, so.
Sure.
But we've always said, hey, check the boxes, and then we lean on them to make those, address those issues on the backside. But now that we've been bitten by that, we want to see those addressed before we, at least me personally, before we move that forward, so.
Include also, so to include then the MOU?
I, I would like to see that as well.
If that's, you know.
If that's within our school district.
I think that, then we don't send him back, because these, you know, they've done most everything, but I think those things are important. If you guys are-
And I think that does meet the requirement, because in a situation where we're talking about a subdivision and design review, one of those that you can't really say no to unless you give direction on what to do to bring it back, so.
Right, I think.
I think you're doing exactly that, so. Yeah, sorry.
Mark, yes. Mark Bybee, city attorney. Just listen to this, I want to make, because I'm, I'm not sure I understand what direction's being given back to the applicant, so I want to make sure, you know, it's clear, because it sounded like something about an MOU is thrown out, that sounds like school district stuff, but there is also irrigation district stuff, like what is the direction, I think you need to be clear.
Okay. And I can, I can put that on the record, so you can go back and listen. So the, obviously the agreement with the school district, we want that fleshed out and finalized. I think they said they were in agreements, but that's not, they haven't worked out the MOU yet. So they could not come to agreements with that, and then that would change what the school district, maybe their stance on it. The other thing is the Boise and Kuna irrigation district letter, the last thing it said is they were still working on the drainage and irrigation, is that correct? So we want both of those clarified.
And waters to the adjoining property.
Okay, so then again, Mark Bybee, city attorney, just the one bit of advice I'd offer on that is just due to the the nature of those two different conditions. I, I do believe that the irrigation district is an appropriate one where you should be, you know, looking for that, that issue to be satisfied before approval, or at the very least, it'd be a condition of approval. I'm one of those things, I agree with that. As to the school district thing, due to the nature of impact fee law and our ability to compel, you know, cooperation with this MOU process that the school district has, I'm, I'm reluctant to advise you to have that as a condition or a requirement, because the law around that is, is not really supportive of the city conditioning approval of a project on participation in that process with the district.
Well, then I'll kind of push back on that and say we either need a letter of support or denial.
My, my advice stands.
We got the, we got the letter of support that was added in.
But it says that you're-
Well, I didn't read the letter, so I don't know it's a letter of support, so.
Marina can add that to the, she can add the letter to the record by the continued hearing, certainly.
Okay.
Yeah. Sorry.
Doug Hanson, yes.
Yeah, one clarifying question, just so we understand. What level of detail do you want to see on the irrigation district solution? Do you want a letter from BKID saying it's satisfied? Do you want some sort of design? We just want to be clear that we include something in the packet that meets your standard of thinking.
I'm going to lean on you for that, Councilman McPherson.
I went to refresh my thing and it killed the whole deal, so I'm shooting from the hip. But it needs to state that the, the issue that was on there, where they went back and forth in about three letters, is finally resolved with the delivery for McClure properties and the separate homeowner on the north end of this development. And then also the drainage issue from the said Ardell Road property to be addressed.
Got it.
No, I did have one other question for Mark. The other thing that came to mind was the, the outlet at McClure Road. We also heard them say that they would either put up a fence or something else. I would like to have one or the other, something deciding, telling us what they're going to put up. If they're going to put up a barrier or a fence, or, because the same thing, I think falls onto it, is we'll put up a fence or a barrier, next thing you know, it's, it's some ribbon.
You mentioned a side obscuring fence or something like that, I think you mentioned.
I just want to know what we're, you know, what we're really going to put there. And I, and I want it to, I want it to say, hey, we're going to put this there, and that's-
They could dig some rocks out of the ground and just put them there, because they're going to be big enough.
Yeah. I just want something definitive, after what we went through with the other person, I'd just like to have it all clean and neat, so we don't go back and forth and then leaning on Doug and it's not-
All right, I'm going to try, there's a little talk and question, so I'm going to do my best. Mark Bybee, city attorney. So as far as what the city can compel, it's whatever's in code, I don't know what the city standard is. Doug would be better on that, like what's the standard for what we can require on a stub road? And if there's the ability, and since that's a perimeter, maybe there's the ability to perimeter fence it with the rest of it. If it's not something that can be mandatory through code, then it'd be something that the developer would need to agree to a different barrier being constructed. So with that, I'll defer to Doug on what the specific standard is.
For the record, Doug Hanson, Planning and Zoning Director. So what we would do is just make the condition that the perimeter fence be a- For the record, Doug Hanson, Planning and Zoning Director. So what we would do is just make the condition that the perimeter fence be extended along the stub street, and it would be a six-foot vinyl fence or some other approved material.
Okay, yeah. And that would just be put in the agreement?
Uh, correct. We could add it as a condition of approval.
Okay. Uh, and then you understood what Greg was looking for? Okay. So, uh, what date, a month?
Just be a date uncertain because of the.
Date uncertain?
There's, yeah, plenty to.
Um, I think we need to do a date certain.
So if you, I, my advice is to do a date certain. If you don't, you actually have to go through re-noticing, um, and publication. Whereas if you do a date certain, announce it here, that is notice.
So it's more how long it'll take to get the drainage, uh, thing worked out.
I was gonna say, so is it fair to ask the presenter what he thinks his timeframe would be to get this accomplished?
I think it's a good idea too, yes.
Yes, if you would wanna address that.
Mayor, council members, um, I like to think I can get things done. Uh, I, I don't think what you've asked us to do, uh, is outside my capabilities to get it done. As long as I can get coordinated with, the irrigation district is gonna be the big one and potentially the homeowner. So thirty days.
Well, we can do that, and then if something happens that needs to be brought back, we can change that date from that point in time, so. I think that should be a safe.
Mark.
March third.
If that's enough, yeah. Thank you.
All right.
Mayor, I just, I, I'm gonna offer, just cause I think this might help, uh, individuals that are interested in the application. If by the time that hearing comes around, there's been communication, it's not gonna be ready. Um, the hearing will still be called and open, but then continued, and staff typically will mark on the agenda, identifying if they expect continuing, so that people know, and it's not just show up and be like, oh, my gosh, it was continued and why I'm here. They will put it on the agenda, so check the agenda. If you're afraid there's gonna be continuance, you should be able to see it on there before you get here.
Good.
All right, I move we, um, table case number twenty-five dash oh-nine dash S to a date certain of March third.
Second.
All right, motion is made and seconded. Uh, is there any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you, everyone. Uh, that takes us to case number twenty-five zero-two zero A, an ordinance amendment on pole signs and zoning text amendment. Uh, Doug Hanson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the record, Doug Hanson, Planning and Zoning Director, seven fifty-one West Fourth Street, Kuna. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Department requests a zoning text amendment application for modifications to the Development Regulations Code for pole signs. Staff believes that the proposed changes will better serve the intent of the sign code to protect property values and create an attractive community while encouraging creative, readable, uncluttered, and well-maintained signage. A special use permit approval will be required for the construction of all pole signs and the zoning districts and locations where pole signs can be constructed will be limited to the north-south corridor alignment of State Highway sixty-nine Meridian Road within C-two area commercial and C-three service commercial zones. This will limit the impact of these signs to more heavily trafficked commercial developments while preserving the neighborhood character of other arterial corridors throughout the city where neighborhood commercial uses and significant residential development are already present. And with that, I will stand by for any questions you have.
Thank you, Dibby. All right, questions for Doug?
What brought this, uh, what was the problem and what are we solving?
Um, for the record, Doug Hanson, Planning and Zoning Director. So what we've seen is just pole signs have a more significant impact on adjoining properties because they can be built up to or over thirty feet in height. And the way code was structured, it could be one pole sign per business, and it wasn't limited to the zone or corridor where they could be constructed. What we ultimately determined was these would have the most significant impact on adjoining properties, most predominantly residential ones. So we wanna be able to review these and limit them to specific zones. Pole signs also have a pretty significant impact on tree canopy, so when all of these trees that we're requiring these developers to plant grow up tall, they'll be blocking the pole signs anyway, or vice versa, and we don't wanna impact either or.
Okay. Any further questions for Doug?
I have none.
No.
All right, this is a public hearing. I didn't have anybody to sign up to testify in this matter. Is anybody who wishes to testify that didn't get a chance to sign in? All right, seeing none. Back to council.
Uh, Doug, is this gonna currently impact anyone? Are they gonna have to remove their signs?
Nope, so all pole signs that currently exist and were lawfully constructed will just be legal non-conforming, so they can stay in place as long as they're there.
Grandfathers, huh?
Yep.
I move we close the evidence presentation. Move to deliberation.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move we approve case number twenty-five dash zero-two dash O-A.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded for approval. Is there any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Uh, that takes us to case number twenty-five zero-two CPA, Comprehensive Plan Amendment, uh, Area of Impact Reduction. Doug Hanson.
Uh, Mayor and Council, for the record, Doug Hanson, Planning and Zoning Director, seven fifty-one West Fourth Street, Kuna. Uh, Planning and Zoning Department proposes a Comprehensive Plan Amendment application to reduce the City of Kuna area of impact boundary. Per the Idaho Code Local Land Use Planning Act, an area of impact is where growth and development are expected to occur. Areas of impact should be planned for growth and development and should not be used to stop growth and development that conforms to applicable plans and ordinances. Areas of impact should be established, modified, or confirmed based on the ability and likelihood of a city or cities to annex lands within that area of impact in the near future. The Comprehensive Plan identifies the proposed area of impact reduction areas. Future land use map designations as public at approximately five thousand and fifty-four acres and agriculture at approximately four hundred and seventy-seven acres. The five thousand five hundred and thirty-one acres proposed to be removed is ninety-nine percent government-owned, either by Idaho Department of Corrections or the Bureau of Land Management. The likelihood to provide services to those parcels within the next five years is improbable. There has also been con- contention between cities or cities and counties throughout the state recently, based on current or proposed areas of impact. We just want to make sure that we are doing our best to conform that the standards is set forth by the state and do not retain lands within our area of impact where growth or development is unrealistic or unnecessary. And with that, I will stand by for any questions.
Okay, questions for Doug? Yes, Councilmember Biggs.
Yes, sir. Doug, um, so these make sense to me in the, in a general sense. Um, I know we're not gonna develop at the prison. Um, but the Ten Mile Creek area, can you expand a little on that? Is that, so is that, um, BLM? If that's the entire, I guess that's all the way from Pleasant Valley, almost to the golf course, it looks like.
Yeah, so that.
Drive by that almost every day.
Yeah, so that's all public with the exception of the four hundred and seventy-seven agricultural acres. And the reason those would also be excluded from the area of impact is because they would no longer be contin- contiguous uh, because of all of the, uh, government land in between.
Well, I remember that big gap that's just to the south of it. That was what we just recently took out of the area of impact, I believe, right? For the solar, solar farm. I just wasn't sure if this was kinda gonna follow the same route, but if that's, uh, if that's BLM land, then they'll do what they're gonna do with it, I guess.
This government land, can we just give it back to people thirty acres and a mule at a time?
You bet. Let's do it.
Share dropping?
I toned it down some.
Uh, question for Doug as well.
Yes.
Doug, on your paper, uh, that you presented, page one fifty-six of two oh seven, at the bottom, it says there's two parcels totaling nine hundred and forty acres divided by the area of impact boundary in a conflict, blah, blah, blah. What, which, what is that?
Yeah, so if you go one page further down in the packet, and you look at the very south end of the area of impact, there, the blue line goes through two of the hashed red parcels. So Gary, it's on the south. Those, those two, uh, just.
Oh, okay.
The blue line, so the, if you go east of that slightly.
Right.
Um, two of those parcels have to come out because that's against, uh, state code. You can't have parcels bisected by an area of impact boundary. It has to be wholly within or wholly without.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you, Doug.
All right, anything further for Doug before I open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. I didn't have anybody sign up to testify in this matter. Is there somebody who wishes to testify that didn't get a chance to sign in? All right, seeing none. Back to you.
I have a question real quick, back to Doug. Um, going back to that line, that's the one where it's bisecting on either side of the Locust Grove. If I remember, that's the diode project, right? That, that gray area down towards, at the very southernmost part. Right here, right.
I'm getting north and south backwards on those.
So is that, is that the project? Because my concern is, is it, so I guess first is what, what is that, that red area that's right around it, directly around it?
All of the red hash represents the property to be removed. That, all to the south, the southwestern portion of the map, that is all federal or state property. It's mostly the morally birds of prey.
Okay, I was just thinking, you know, if there were any future, you know, desires for power or something like that that might come adjacent to that property, or something to support it, or something that might be something the city would be interested in. But, okay, if it's not our, if it's not, if it's federal land, then obviously that's not gonna be another issue.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Bruce.
Uh, what, what prompted this? Cause that's been in there for a while. What, what made us say, hey, let's take it out now and?
So it's, it really started with the changes at the state level for the, how they define area of impact boundaries, and then going through the process of the application for the, the request for that solar farm area to be removed from our area of impact. It made us take a, a larger look at our AOI as a whole, and ultimately, we determined that it's not necessarily responsible for us to maintain mostly government and federal land. That, speaking internally, I spoke with the mayor and I spoke with Public Works, we don't have the capability to ever service this property in the foreseeable future. So in order to better align with state code, it didn't make any sense for us to keep that in our area of impact.
Wasn't there also an issue with another town somewhere where there was actually a lawsuit over this? I thought I saw, you should, I think you did. I, I know I saw something in interviews about this.
McCall, um, there was a, uh, big, um, Valley County and McCall got into it, um, over the area of city impacts.
I thought so, okay, thanks.
Not gonna dive into the weeds. Our office represents McCall, just FYI. It was related to this, but different issues. It was, it was, that lawsuit stemmed from the code changes, um, that the state made, um, but on a far different issue than what's going on here. Um, McCall and Valley County's relationship's just a bit different than what I'd say the relationship is between Ada County and, um, Kuna.
And as Doug and I discussed, it, it mostly was about just making sure we're in compliance and
Sure.
uh, doing what we're supposed to do, so.
Good one.
Uh, I move we close eviden- uh.
I'm good.
I move we close evidence presentation and move to deliberation.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move we approve case number twenty-five dash zero-two dash CPA.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded for approval. Any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, fiscal twenty-twenty-six, quarter one budget update, Jared Impy. So I get when I don't have my glasses on and I'm trying to look at the little one.
Good evening, uh, Mayor and Council, and Jared Impy, City Treasurer. Uh, before you is the results for, uh, Q-one of fiscal twenty-twenty-six that started October one, that went through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Uh, this is, uh, like I said, the first three months of activity for the city. Uh, the first page is just a cash reconciliation of all the accounts that the city, uh, currently has. Plus, uh, it has all, everything related to the Urban Renewal Agency. And so, uh, uh, at the end of December, uh, we had a hundred and eight million in, uh, cash on hand. It's really good. I believe we started off the year with a hundred and two, so, uh, again, really good progress through the first three months due to strong growth and also, uh, uh, good management in our budget. The second page that, uh, is in the packet just shows a basic, uh, income statement by fund. As you can see, each fund, uh, had, uh, good activity through the first three months of the year. The general fund, uh, showed, uh, positive two-point-two million. Uh, the grant fund, uh, through the first three months, uh, hasn't shown any activity. However, we had one expense, uh, for, uh, uh, the, the traffic signal at, uh, Walgreens that was installed, came in, uh, very late. And so you'll see some activity there, but it'll be pretty small. There is a fund balance that's carrying over of about four hundred thousand, so again, the grant fund, since, uh, uh, we've gotten past the pandemic era, we really haven't seen a whole lot of activity because of ARPA and because of the CARES Act money, uh, going away. Uh, the next fund is the latecomers fund, which we use to extend, uh, infrastructure projects throughout the city. So far, that's shown some really good, uh, growth, uh, through the first three months. And, uh, we'll see those expenses paid out later in the year, in August. That's when we see those reimbursements. Currently, we only have one reimbursement package that's open. Uh, we may have a few others that roll in throughout the, the year that will be small, but, uh, uh, we expect those to, uh, not change the budget significantly. Fund twenty is our water. Uh, as you can see, we have two water funds. One is of the core of the city, and then one, Fund twenty-seven is the Water East. The reason that these, we have two water funds is because they are not connecting, and as part of the development agreement that we set up with, with Meta, they were, uh, requested that they not connect. And due to, uh, other agreements, uh, it was beneficial to not connect them. And so, uh, with that, we have Fund twenty. So far, that's showing good, uh, income there of about seven hundred thousand. Uh, Fund twenty-one, our sewer fund, also, uh, bringing in strong cash, uh, increase there of about one million. The irrigation fund, six hundred and eighty-one thousand is good. Uh, Fund twenty-six is our solid waste fund, which is strictly a pass-through fund in which we account for, uh, accounts receivable for J and M sanitation. So in essence, this should always be pretty close to zero. Uh, it'll be a little bit, uh, positive just due to a timing issue, but, uh, essentially, that's a zero. Uh, pretty close to zero fund for the year. Uh, Fund twenty-seven, as I stated, that's the water end of the East Fund. So far, that's, uh, done really well. Uh, I wouldn't expect there to be a whole lot of activity for that for several years just because, uh, we got gifted a new system by Meta. And so, uh, really, we probably won't see a whole lot of significant, uh, capital improvement projects out there for quite a while unless a new, uh, a new business wants to connect, in which that case, we'd probably ask for that, uh, new business to contribute to any of those improvements. Uh, Fund twenty-eight, again, that's the sewer end of it, uh, is, uh, likewise, pretty similar in its activity. Capital, uh, projects, that's essentially linked to, uh, the general fund. Uh, again, this'll always be a zero fund because whatever is, uh, paid out, uh, we transfer from the general fund. And so, as you can see, we haven't done too many projects or purchased that many vehicles yet this year, but, uh, but the plan is to do some more of those. The Park Impact Fund, we've seen some good activity due to building so far this year, and we've also gotten a start on a few projects. I believe Helen Zamzo's and also Patagonia Park. Fund fifty-one is our police impact fund. It's a small fund due to not having an in-house police force. However, the purpose for this fund is to reimburse the general fund for its contribution several years ago in building the police station next to City Hall. And so the plan is to have that paid off in three or four years. Hopefully, building continues and we're able to do so. And then as I stated, fifty-two and fifty-three, those are our urban renewal agencies. Although those are not consolidated within the city's financial statements at the end of the year, I still present them so that the council, which has oversight over the urban renewal agency, can see how they're doing. As you can see, we received our first six, our first half of the year payment of property taxes for each one. The Urban Renewal East is, was heavily affected by legislation, and so the growth in that one will be small. And the Urban Renewal West, we've actually started accumulating a little bit of, of funds within that, in that, in that urban renewal agency. And so at some point, we can start doing some capital improvement projects, potentially some transportation projects within that zone. And then the final page just kind of shows the detail for, that makes up the, the income statement that we presented. I highlighted a few items that, you know, are of most interest. The biggest thing is that with Project Gemstone and the, and everything with that being hung up in, in judicial review, some of the items that we had budgeted for probably won't come in this year due to the timing of the design review and any potential approvals through that process. And so building permits will look a little bit lower this year just due to those delays. Electrical permits, which are very large in data center projects. And then the mitigation fee that Project Gemstone had, had, we had come to an agreement over in which they would pay four hundred thousand dollars indexed for inflation over a twenty-year period to help support police services. That'll be delayed. And so with that, those are the only significant items that are currently being affected with this year's budget. Overall, everything looks good despite these delays in the data center project. I think that everything will still come out looking good. One of the items was a large carryover project from fiscal twenty-five, which was the, the additional council chambers that we're building out front of two point two million dollars. And so essentially, once everything kind of rolls through over a two-year basis comparing fiscal twenty-five and twenty-six, I think everything will still look really good. And most of the other items that I highlighted just show that some of the expenses are front-loaded in the year, such as dues and memberships or other items such as insurance. And so even though they're a little bit higher now, they'll equal out over the course of the year. And with that, I want to just open it up for any council questions or any discussion, if any.
Okay, questions for Jared?
No, actually.
Councilmember Biggs.
I appreciate it.
No, yeah, this is great. Thank you for the breakdown. I did have a question about the Fourth Street Gym.
Okay.
Has anything progressed on that?
We will be meeting with the school district on Friday about that, so we'll see where we get with that. Staff's gonna get together Thursday and then we'll meet with the school district Friday to see. We still haven't heard exactly what they're expecting out of this, so until we make that connection and they can know what they can get out of us, then we still don't have any agreement. So we did meet one, one other time in between, but really didn't get anywhere with that meeting. So we had a meetings to set up a meeting, basically, where we're at, so, but Friday we'll, we'll be meeting with them again. Thank you.
I had another question.
Yes, Councilmember Bruce.
I know that we had, I, I appreciate this. I know that we had talked about movement, the budget cycle this year that we would hear from the directors about just what their plan is and what their budget. Do you know when that would start? Do you have, have you fleshed out that process, any?
So we can probably start that in around April or so. Any earlier than that, probably, we probably don't have good data or any estimates that we may have, probably will change. And so really, April would probably be the earliest for that. What may be a good idea for that would be to have a working group from council to, to kind of, any council members that would be most interested in, in the budget may sit in on that. We're open to ideas on how, how the council would want to proceed on that.
What's your vision? Are you talking, are you talking like in an evening? Because like obviously some people work during the day.
Well, I think, so I think what we're talking about basically is it's, it's hard to get everybody together for a public meeting. If we, if we do a committee, then we can have a couple of council members that meet with directors and Jared and, and work through that issue without having to do a meeting. It can be whatever time of day, whoever needs it to be, and I think it kind of opens it up a little more. What I foresee is I think we're gonna get the directors and Jared and myself together and we'll kind of go through, at least to set a base, and then we can bring in the, if, if you're okay with that, bring in a committee and then start working through that process.
That's what I was thinking is they would, you could have certain members flesh out the, the base or any potential supplemental request. I, I just wanted to be able to the community to see what that looks like too, and then hear from the directors about their plan for their department, whether it's, hey, we're gonna build this, we're looking to build that. And I know you had mentioned it, and that kind of gives the, the community a little more understanding of, of what each department's doing and what their plans are.
I don't think the expectation on our end at least, at least on mine, is specifics, right? I mean, if there are specifics, that's great, but I mean like ballpark type of figures, big ticket items that we know, hey, we have trucks that are gonna need to be, you know, done or, or something with the, you know, we're gonna replace a sewer line or something like that. That's, those are big things, obviously, that, you know. That's, that's kind of what my whole idea about the, of bringing this to us is. We're not gonna hold anyone's feet to the fire, even till August, obviously, but that's kind of the things that I was looking for.
Well, and even just like you said, the base, you know, this is the, essentially the, the budget to maintain that department. And then this is anything else we need, like any enhancements, you know, like this is to keep the lights on, keep our employees, and then, hey, we need to add more employees or we need to, you know. So I, I think it's good for the community to see that too, and then they, they know, so.
I mean, what's been educational for me is to meet with individual directors, like with Parks and Rec with Chris, realizing what they, what the future is even for the next year. It, it's really, it's good to know that. I mean, granted, the budget's still gonna have to be refined. It's just really, it's a good process, I think.
Well, and they do a lot of work that a lot of folks don't get to see, you know, that they, they are doing stuff, so it's good to see that plan. Just my thoughts. I did have one other question for Jared. That, there's a bill coming through, came through local gov that was dealing with solid waste. Have you seen that?
I have not.
Okay, I'll, I'll get that to you. I don't know how that will affect our, our contractor, if it will affect us at all, or I'll, I'll get you the bill number, so.
All right, thank you.
Which one was that?
It's, it came through local gov. It was dealing with solid waste. I haven't, I wasn't on local gov, so I didn't get to hear it, but, but I got a couple of calls.
I didn't remember that it does anything with us, but we'll, yeah.
I reached out to Gordon as well to ask him, so. Thank you, Jared.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
Related to the Fourth Street Gym. I, I assume that when that was, when you went into a negotiation or that you would may purchase the building, the two thousand twenty-six budget was already established at that point, correct? There's no provisions in this two thousand twenty-six if something does get consummated then?
Yeah, no, we didn't, we didn't include it in the budget. That can be something we can at least partially fund with urban renewal funds, but we'll have to, we'll have to get it all budgeted in. If, if it works out to where we needed to buy it sooner, we can do a budget adjustment, but I don't know that we're gonna have to do anything in an emergency type situation before.
It'd be like a supplemental request to, but it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer.
Thanks, Jared.
Thank you.
Oh, goodie ordinances.
Yeah.
All right, consideration to approve ordinance twenty twenty-six zero.
Mr. Mayor, you can always defer those to the newest councilman to read.
Frankie Men. All right, this is an ordinance of the city council, the city of Kuna, making certain findings and enlarging the boundaries of the Kuna Municipal Irrigation System by the inclusion of Ada County Assessors Challenger Development Incorporated and declaring water rights pertinent thereto are pooled for delivery purposes and directing the city clerk to record this ordinance as provided by law, directing the city engineer to provide notice of this ordinance to the Boise-Kuna Irrigation District, the owners, and update the irrigation system map and providing an effective date.
A move we waive three readings of ordinance twenty twenty-six dash zero one.
Motion's made in seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
A move we approve ordinance twenty twenty-six dash zero one.
Motion's made in seconded for approval of the ordinance. Garrett, would you poll the council, please?
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocco?
Yes.
Council President Bruce?
Yes.
And that motion carries. Consideration to approve ordinance twenty twenty-six dash zero-two. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Kuna, making certain findings and enlarging the boundaries of the Kuna Municipal Irrigation System by the inclusion of Ada County Assessors Hubble Homes LLC and declaring water rights pertinent thereto are pooled for delivery purposes and directing the city clerk to record this ordinance as provided by law and directing the city engineer to provide notice of this ordinance to the Boise-Kuna Irrigation District, the owners, and update the irrigation system map and providing an effective date.
A move we waive three readings of ordinance twenty twenty-six dash zero-two.
Second.
Motion's made in seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
A move we approve ordinance twenty twenty-six dash zero-two.
Second. Motion is made in seconded for approval. Garrett, would you poll the council?
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocco?
Yes.
Council President Bruce?
Yes.
And that motion carries. Consideration to approve ordinance twenty twenty-six zero-three. An ordinance of the city council, the city of Kuna, making certain findings and enlarging the boundaries of the Kuna Municipal Irrigation System by the inclusion of Ada County Assessors Hubble Homes LLC and declaring water rights pertinent thereto are pooled for delivery purposes and directing the city clerk to record this ordinance as provided by law and directing the city engineer to provide notice of this ordinance to the New York Irrigation District, the owners, and update the irrigation system map and providing an effective date.
A move we waive three readings of ordinance twenty twenty-six dash zero-three.
Second.
Motion's made in seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
A move we approve ordinance twenty twenty-six dash zero-three.
Second.
Motion's made in seconded for approval. Garrett, would you poll the council, please?
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocco?
Yes.
Council President Bruce?
Yes.
And that motion carries. And that is all we have on the agenda for tonight. Is there anything that council wants to bring up? Councilmember Bruce, I know you're working with legislator feverishly this year, so we appreciate that.
Yeah, I think just that if you hear, if you talk with folks, the, they did have the three percent cuts to the state budget that the governor recommended. J-FAC also put out an additional one and two percent cuts, but they did hold harmless K through twelve education and Medicaid, also police. So those will not have to participate in the additional one to three, or one to two percent cut, so you can look through those. It's, so you'll hear a lot of different things. The governor put out a whole list of Medicaid stuff to remove, but it's all actually folks who really need assistance, so not a lot of people are taking those up in work groups. So if people reach out to you, just food for thought.
I just give them your number. They reach out to me.
I'll start giving them yours. That's all.
Good, and are they still, are they still talking about making any cuts to education, or is that still?
No, they, they haven't come back up. I'm not in the education work group. I'm just in the health and welfare and then local, or the state government, so.
Right, I got you.
It'll be curious. I think virtual schools they've talked about, and then the governor recommended pulling back ten million from their launch program, which I think is eighty million in it already, so. Trying to pull back that adult section because most people think that it's for, you know, high school graduates, but they encompass adults in it too, so we'll see how that goes.
I see, good. All right, anything further? All right, well, I appreciate that all very much, and meeting is adjourned.